Good evening to you all and welcome to the May 4, 2020 Town Council Meeting. This is our regular scheduled first meeting on Monday, excuse me. So before I ask the clerk, Ms. Stella Gibson, to call the role, I should note that we are aware that Councilmember Singleton is delayed slightly and we think he's going to be as late as maybe 10 minutes. So he will sign on and be accounted for when he arrives. So with that being said, Ms. Gibson, would you call the role?
Mayor Marshburn.
Present.
Mayor President Barrett here. Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Delington.
Here.
And Councilmember Van.
Here.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you. We'll be following our regular agenda. And so I'm going to call on Councilmember Matthews at this time, if he will, to lead us in honoring our country by saying the pledge of allegiance, or leading us in the pledge, and then he will follow that with an indication. Mr. Matthews.
Mayor, if you can stand where you can or just sit upright, we'll work through this thing. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Our loving and heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for the privilege of living in a free country such as we have here. Lord, we pray for wisdom as we try to get through this virus. We pray that there will be an end soon, that we can get our lives back together. Lord, I pray that you grant our president, his staff, wisdom to make some tough decisions, as well as our state and county level, right down to our municipalities, Lord, that we make the right decisions to protect our citizens and get our country back on path. Lord, just thank you for the opportunity of serving the citizens of Garner and give us a good meeting tonight as we debate issues and try to make good decisions. And again, grant us wisdom to do the right thing. And we give you the praise and the glory in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. We always have on our agenda at the very beginning, a section called petitions and comments. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda. And since the council is meeting virtually during the COVID-19 stay-at-home order, the town has provided an online form and as an alternative to speaking in person. And so those interested in submitting comments would have had the opportunity to complete this form between the hours of 9:00 and 2:00 p.m. today. And also, if preferred, could call into a number. The town clerk would receive those calls and would note those and would read those into the records if we haven't. Ms. Gibson, do we have any comments to share this evening?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that very much. Okay, council, the next item on our agenda is to get us going by adoption of the agenda. You have it before you. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
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 In the opposition, no, and it is so ordered. The next item on our agenda covers presentations, and we're pleased to have this evening with us Greg Robinson, the FM Investments. He's been with us on numerous other occasions at this time. He is with us virtually, all the way from Washington, D.C., or the surrounding area. So, Mr. Robinson, we turn the floor over to you for your presentation at this time, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor Marshburn and council. Thank you for the time and the city management and administration. I'm going to share my screen here.
Please.
You bear with me. Can you all see the presentation, Town of Garner, North Carolina, First Quarter 2020 Portfolio Economic Update?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, excellent. All right, technology is working at its best.
Very good, very good.
I was telling Councilman Peters before we all popped on, I've used many different versions of technology in the last seven weeks. Zoom and Teams and WebEx and FaceTime and the like to meet with folks. So thank you for setting this up and allowing me the opportunity to talk to you today virtually. Can't wait for the opportunity to see you all in person, hopefully, in the future.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So with that, I'll dive into the presentation. I know there are some new council members. And for those who are familiar with my presentations, I typically start out with the economic update, and then I go into the town's operating funds portfolio with an update and kind of end with where we think we're going to take the portfolio down the road in the future. So just to start with the economic update, domestic data was pretty strong going into the new year, 2020. So I'm going to give a recap of the first quarter 2020, just to orient you all. But here you can see, this is the major economic data point that we follow, that you hear in the news. GDP growth had top endless estimates. In 2019, we were probably growing GDP at about 2.7% average for the year. You can see that at that top-left bar chart, which showed our GDP growth, which is telling you the overall health of the economy. If you go into the second chart, you can see the consumer board, excuse me, conference board of consumer confidence, which was at all-time highs around 2020, excuse me, 2019. And the consumer is a big part of GDP. The consumer makes up about 70% of overall GDP. So when consumers are high or have a lot of confidence in the overall economy, they're spending, they're doing great things, they're supporting their local economy, state economy, and also the nation. So that was good going into 2020. New home sales was also reaching highest levels in the last decade. So that's also a good sign. Folks are confident. GDP is strong, and folks are buying new homes at that bottom-left chart. And then the bottom-right bar chart is the average monthly job growth. And we had pretty much all-time record in terms of job growth since the financial crisis back in '08, '09. So you can see the ebbs and flows of job growth. But it was pretty much a pretty strong decade of job growth. The country had an all-time low or 50-year low of unemployment. And things were looking pretty good going into 2020. And then unfortunately, we got hit with the COVID-19 pandemic, which has pretty much shut down the entire nation and also the global economy. It's a three-pronged crisis, as you probably already know. It's the healthcare crisis that has affected the economy and also impacts the financial market. You know, COVID-19 has seen the nation and also the Federal Reserve and Treasury take dramatic and drastic measures to support the economy and not take us into a deep, severe depression. But with the Fed stepping in, and I'll talk about that in the next few slides, and also Treasury providing payments, things have stabilized. We saw a big, deep drop-off in the capital markets in the mid-March timeframe, where you actually saw the entire Treasury yield curve fall below 1% for a few days, which is unprecedented and has never happened before. Rates have rebounded and I'll show a slide that shows a somewhat steepening yield curve, which is a good thing. But to see the Treasury curve fall below 1% was definitely a shock and definitely a shock to the overall economy. Then also to add to the mix, you had oil. You had a price war between OPEC, Saudi Arabia, and Russia, which they continued to pump oil, but the demand wasn't there, given the economy being shut down, the global economy being shut down. Just some more data points around what's happening. And Councilman Matthews and I were just talking to the caller about flying. And I told him I haven't been on a plane since February. Using them on a plane at least once a week, and I just haven't flown. And PFM is a firm that's put a stop to all of us flying. Typically, a lot of us are flying around, meeting with clients and things of that nature. But I just haven't been on a plane since the end of February. I think the day that I stopped traveling was actually March 8th. I did my last trip, then I was in the car. But things have come to a complete halt. And you can see just the top chart, the TSA checkpoint travel numbers compared to 2020 and 2019. The top line in the blue is what happened essentially a year ago in 2019. And now you can see the big drop-off around March 8th, March 15th, the week of March 8th and March 15th, and now pretty much no one's traveling at this point in time. Going down to weekly gross box office sales, you know, everyone was going to the movies or, you know, going out and enjoying their lives. And that has also come from the stop. If you look at the weekend, it's this bottom-left chart. Weekly box office sales has dropped off dramatically towards the end of April, excuse me, end of March and into April. This data is from March and a portion of April. And the same thing for restaurant reservations. You can see the dramatic drop-off in restaurant reservations. So this is just giving you different samples of how the consumer and businesses have essentially stopped spending and stopped going out and as to the measures that have been taking place to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Councilman Matthews, again, our conversation prior to this, I can't wait till you have the opportunity to go out to your favorite restaurant and get some good food. Hopefully, these numbers will tick back up once we get COVID-19 taken care of. GDP, so this slide seven, these are just the economist's forecast for GDP for the remainder of the year and the first quarter, excuse me, second quarter 2021. We had the first print of GDP last week, and it contracted about 4.8% or 5%. So it was somewhat in line with what you saw, what you see on this chart, where the consensus was about negative 5% GDP growth in the first quarter. We think that that growth will be a lot worse in the second quarter as it'll pick up, you know, the continued social distancing that has been occurring for the last seven weeks. And economists' estimates look at about 33% contraction in GDP for the second quarter. Hopefully, that isn't the case, but right now, that's the way things are going. That may be the case, although we see certain states starting to slowly open back up, which may take that number, it won't be as dramatic as a decline. But that's something that we're watching. And I give you all these different data points to let you know this is how we kind of view what's happening in the economy and that impact, the way that we manage the town's investment portfolio and looking at the different sectors that we're able to buy, try to add value opportunistically to the town's portfolio. And I'll get into that a little bit more down the road.
Craig.
Next slide. Yes?
Just a quick interruption, and I think many people know this, but for those in our listening audience who may not, could you just kind of define the quarters? I think they follow the federal fiscal year, do they not, starting in October?
The quarters, oh, GDP quarters?
Yeah, yeah.
No, they actually, it's on a calendar year. So, oh, yeah, yes, yeah. So it's quarter end, March 31st, and that's the first quarter GDP print. And then it'll be June 30th, and we'll get the numbers a few weeks after, after the quarter end.
Okay. I used to work for the federal government, and I knew their fiscal year was different, and I thought those two were synonymous. But they are not. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Yeah, the federal government's fiscal year starts September 1st through August 31st.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Going into slide eight, this is just more data showing signs of the economy deteriorating. This is data as of last week. The initial jobless claims number is actually higher. It was 26, a little over 26 million jobless claims, and now it's about a little over 30 million. So that's a dramatic decrease in the number of jobs and folks filing for jobless claims. We get the unemployment number this week, this on Friday, as a matter of fact. And a lot of folks are predicting that that number will be at all-time, maybe a record high, around 20% unemployment. So, you know, it's just a number that we're going to continue to watch going forward. And hopefully, it's not as bad as folks are predicting. University of Michigan Consumer Sentiment, I show you the consumer confidence. This is just a measure of this second chart, top right, of consumer sentiment. You know, typically, we've averaged over about 90. 90 is basically the level. Average about 90 for the last four years or so. But now you see the dramatic drop for the month of April, all the way down to about 60 or so. So not financial crisis levels, but still, you can see just that dramatic decrease in consumer sentiment, how they feel about what's happening in the economy. This bottom-left chart is retail sales. This is month over month. You can see just the dramatic drop when we're social distancing and not able to go out and shop. That's just going to have a big impact on retail sales, and you can see that in the numbers here. And the same thing with industrial production. Folks aren't spending money, or there's a need. That manufacturing number has also been declining. So I know I've been pretty negative, unfortunately, with data, but this is just the reality of what we're facing at this current time. But, you know, we're continuing to watch it and try to be wise in our decisions in managing the town's portfolio. So the Fed, let's talk about the Fed. The Fed, particularly for the way that we manage the town's portfolio, which is essentially a one-year strategy, meaning the average maturity on the securities in the town's portfolio matures in one year. So the Fed has a big impact on rates that impact the town's overall portfolio. So in March, we saw the Fed cut rates on March 3rd about 50 basis points. And then they did an emergency meeting about a week and a half later on March 15th and went to zero, essentially. So now the Fed Fund's target rate is between 0 and 25 basis points, and it will remain at that level for the foreseeable future. Fed Chair Powell has essentially said, we're going to do any and everything that we can to support the economy and try to boost the economy in any way that we can. And you can see that in many of the programs that the Fed has come out with, along with Treasury over the past few weeks. So the first move they did was the zero interest rates, and then they started buying up Treasury and agency mortgage-backed securities. They added some additional liquidity support in the fixed income market. There was a great deal of dislocation mid-March, where you just saw spreads widening on investment-grade and high-yield credits. It was hard for folks, let's say you owned a high-yield bond and you wanted to sell it. You may have had a hard time trying to sell it at that time because there was such a dislocation, and folks just didn't know what was happening. And you were going to take a major haircut if you tried to sell those bonds. So to kind of have a better impact on that market and add liquidity, where folks, if they needed to get out and raise cash, they could. So the Fed backstopped those particular markets with some liquidity support. They implemented assets and purchasing programs with Treasuries and agency mortgage-backed securities and unlimited supply. Some of this is the old 2008, 2009 playbook, but they just implemented it a lot faster. But then, you know, they added some additional measures where you see the Paycheck Protection Program, the PPP, which has been talked about a great deal. We're in our second round of funding. Also, the Main Street Lending Program is part of the CARES Act. So the Fed and Treasury are doing a lot of support to prop up the overall economy. Going to the next slide, this is the yield curve. So this is the Treasury yield curve. So the top line here, this yellow line, is this is where the yield curve was on December 31st, 2019. So interest rates are a lot higher than where they are now. There was the slight inversion in the yield curve, which you see here. So meaning short-term rates were slightly higher than longer term. And the one-year timeframe was slightly higher than... So basically, you had a higher yield on a one-year security than you did on a four- or five-year security. This is in December. So that's a signal that there's stress in the market. And then you saw yields, again, on the long end of the curve, start to come down, and you saw a short-term yield. So a three-month security was yielding a lot higher than a 10-year. So that still signals more stress in the market. Coming into 2020, folks were considering, a lot of economists and folks in the market, when the recession was going to happen or occur. And a lot of projections were saying maybe in 2021 or so, because because of the trade war and just overall slowing of the economy, this yield curve inversion somewhat signals that that could be happening, what could happen sometime in the future. And then you look at this line here, this is as of April 24th, 2020. This solid blue line, you can see that there's no longer an inversion, and the yield curve is somewhat normalized, although very low. But we're in a very low interest rate environment, given the actions that the Fed has taken and just what's happening in the overall global economy, where the U.S. Treasury is essentially a flight to safety. So anytime there's some kind of crisis going on in the world, folks fly into Treasury securities because they have confidence in the full faith and credit of the United States. So when you see that flight to safety, yields decline across the Treasury curve. So short-term credit spreads. So North Carolina General Statute 159-30 allows us to invest in some credit. So we have a small allocation to commercial paper, A1P1, which is the highest-grade commercial paper. So commercial paper is essentially a short-term loan or debt that's issued by corporations. And the max maturity on commercial paper is about nine months or so, 270 days. So we have a small allocation to some commercial paper for the town's portfolio. The yield is generally higher on commercial paper than it is on Treasury. So looking at this left chart, we're looking at a six-month commercial paper over T-bills. So this is the spread. The spread means what the yield is over similar dated Treasury, so six-month commercial paper yield over Treasury T-bills. So you look at this spike up, this is around the time that the pandemic, we went into the global social distancing, got as high as 150 basis points. And once the Fed stepped in and kind of stabilized the market, you can see that yield, that spread start to come down, and it's about 59 basis points right now. So that's a good sign that there's more stability in the commercial paper market. When folks have fear, they stop buying. They want, and you're looking at riskier asset classes, typically yields on that riskier asset class starts to spike or go up higher than a safe investment like the T-bill. Going over to this right chart, agencies. We hadn't brought agency securities for the town's portfolio in about a year or so. But at the end of March or the end of the quarter, we actually bought a Fannie Mae note for the town's portfolio because yields started to track higher in the agency market. And that's something that we may see more, that we may add more agency securities to the town's portfolio as opportunities present themselves. And finally, this is just our sector, fixed income sector outlook for April 2020. We're about neutral on commercial paper, so that black dot represents what our current outlook is. And the yellow, excuse me, the white dot is what our outlook was one month ago. So when the crisis, the pandemic occurred, and dislocation started happening in the fixed income markets, we essentially stopped buying any credit, and we slowly have come back into commercial paper. So we have an approval list that we pretty much take all the highly-rated A1P1 commercial paper issuers, and then we assign a rating to them through our credit review process. On that, then we come up with a list that we can buy for our clients' portfolios. So at this point in time, we're at about 60% of comfortable buying off that list. And as things go on and the market continues to stabilize, and we start to see signs of a recovery, we'll probably increase that number. Right now, we're only buying 60% of issuers on that list. That's why you see that number neutral. Treasury, the T-bill and T-note, we were, well, we're still pretty positive on the T-bills, where we can find opportunities, and it's essentially a very liquid and safe security on T-notes, which is longer dated, 20 years or more. We're not as favorable, and that's not something we would buy for the town anyway. As I talked about, agencies, you can see we were pretty neutral about a month ago, and now we're slightly positive to positive. And that's reflected in the town's portfolio at the end of the quarter. And then municipals, GS159-30 allows you to buy North Carolina municipal securities. We're neutral, well, we were neutral there, and now we're slightly negative on munis. There was a big dislocation in the muni market around the middle of March, where you see yields on municipal securities spike up pretty high, higher than what I saw on that, showed on that last slide with commercial paper. So that market is somewhat stabilized, and the Fed has implemented some programs to backstop munis. And we may see some more fiscal policy out of Congress to support municipal governments, which we hope happen. So that's the last slide in the economic update. I know, sorry, I was doom and gloom to start off your meeting for this month, but just wanted to pause and take any questions about the overall economy before I dive into the town's portfolio performance for the quarter.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Councilmembers, at this point, rather than recognize a specific person, I will see if there are questions in general, and we'll go from there. If anybody wants to ask Craig anything about the presentation that's our... Okay, Craig, hearing done. I guess we can proceed to the update, huh?
Okay, well, this is the part that you want to know. How much money did we make?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so here we go. So this is full year 2019 and first quarter 2020 total return performance. So let me explain this table to you all, because some of you may have not seen this because you're new to the council. But this top table shows you the full year total return performance. The left two, the second and third columns essentially represent the benchmark. So the benchmark to measure our performance for the portfolio is the Bank of America Merrill Lynch One-Year Treasury Index. So this is essentially showing you how the index or the benchmark performed and what that total return was based on a $10 million or the $10 million portfolio, which is what we managed for the town. So that tells you what the performance was for the benchmarks. And then you compare that to the third and fourth columns, which says Garner Operating Funds, the headers are in blue, and that shows you what the total return is for 2019. So this is quarter end, so the top row is March 2019. The second row is June, September, and December. And this is how the portfolio performed compared to the benchmark. And then the two columns to the right represent the difference from a percentage basis and also on a dollar basis. So at the end of the quarter in March 2019, we're two basis points higher than the benchmark. We were flat in June, we were flat in September, and then we were underperforming about two basis points, the benchmark. But the number you probably really care about is how much money did we make in 2019? Oh, excuse me. And that's that $289,927, which is slightly, or flat to the benchmark. It was a difference of about $422. This is what the town made from a total return perspective for 2019. If you go down to this bottom table, this is the first quarter 2020. And same story here, so quarter end was March 2020. The second column is the benchmark return, which is 1.72% based on a $10 million portfolio or the size of the portfolio at quarter end for the town. It would have earned $171,000 or a little over $171,000. And then what the actual performance was for the town was actually underperform the benchmark at 1.58% for $157,000. 1.58% for $157,000. Uh, so about a 14 basis point uh, difference from a percentage basis and then a $13,000 difference. Even the town did not lose this money or anything like that. It's just showing a performance between the two uh, uh, between the benchmark and how we, how we perform uh, overall. And and a lot of that had to do with what I talked about in the last section with the dislocation in in the, in the markets and and driving yields a lot lower. And then as we had uh, maturities occurring in the portfolio and reinvest in those uh, maturities into the lower yielding uh, securities. But essentially what you earned uh, for the first quarter was $157,000 or 1.58%. Was there any questions on this particular slide?
Uh, this is, uh, this is Councilman Dellinger. How are you doing?
I'm doing well. How about, how about yourself?
Good. Uh, I have two quick questions. Um, one, is it, is it possible to get this same data with the cost and fees backed out from the returns?
Sure. Yeah, this is, this is gross. So yes, yes, I can do that.
That would be really helpful. And on the first quarter performance, that looks like about an 8% uh, underperformance from the benchmark. Does that have to do, two questions with that. Is that have to do with the commercial paper part of the portfolio? That's the first part of the question. The second is, do you anticipate being able to make up that difference over the course of the entire year without real, a reallocation of the portfolio?
Uh, good, good question. You, the first part, you said an 8% difference?
Yes, between the total returns on the index and the total returns of our actual fund. So that 13,000 uh, measured against the actual dollar amount.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, no, I I'll have to give you the kind of background data. It's it's actually 14 basis point differentials between the two, right? So it's 1.72 minus 1.58. Uh, and that's kind of what the, it's it's a, the rounding is, has the number a little bit off. But uh, it it's not 8% in terms of
I'm sorry, the, the difference between the total return on the index and the total return on the town's fund is at $13,000, correct?
From, from a dollar perspective, yeah.
Yes, yes. So the, it underperformed in dollar terms by 8%.
A little bit. I'm not sure if I'm following you there, Mr. Dellinger.
The, the index return was 171,589. The town's return was 157,623 for that difference of 13,967. So that's 8%. The town's return is 8% under the benchmark's fictional return, correct?
Yes, that is correct, the dollar amounts.
Okay. And now my question, I guess my question for that difference to exist, that exists, uh, the first part of the question was, what, yeah, the first part of the question again was, is that difference related to the commercial paper that's part of the portfolio? And the second part of that question is, will the, the lag that is created here, that is seen here, will that be able to be made up over the course of the year with the current uh, portfolio allocation? Or would there need to be some type of a a adjustment to make up that difference? I see over last year, the balance worked out in in the first part of the year, um, the overperformed and later it underperformed. So it came about even. I'm just wondering if you expect that to occur in this environment for the rest of this year? Or do you see that differential continuing to under, do you see continuing to underperform over the course of the year against the benchmark, given the market condition?
No. Yeah, no, thank, thank you. That's a good question. No, it wasn't the commercial paper that that had a big, a big issue. Uh, about 93% of the town's portfolio is in Treasuries currently. And just with the flight to safety and the, in this sharp decline in in Treasuries, that drug, that basically puts the performance down uh, on the, on the overall uh, portfolio uh, return. And and that's how we underperformed. Uh, but going forward, we actually made up some of it based on preliminary numbers that we have. I can't, unfortunately, I can't share those with you right now. But from what I understand, uh, from the portfolio manager, we've, we've made up some of that, that differential between the benchmark and and the uh, uh, the actual performance that you see here in front of you. Um, we, like I say, we added uh, some agency or agent, a, agency security for uh, to the portfolio. So that, that helped uh, uh, in- increase some of that performance because the the agency yield is uh, that we purchased is, has been higher than a similar dated Treasury. So we essentially uh, added that to to help enhance some of the performance. Uh, and we'll, we'll continue to look opportunity, opportunity, look, look for opportunities to uh, to add additional agencies. Uh, and as we get more comfortable with commercial paper, we may add some, some more to the portfolio.
All right. Thank you very much.
Is it, does that answer your question?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, my, my apologies, yeah, for um, 8%. You, you are correct. Uh, this is just some more background detail uh, at the quarter end. Uh, the portfolio market value as of March 31st, 2020, uh, the yield that market and then the yield that costs and where we were from a duration perspective, so slightly under, under one year. Uh, the, 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 the uh, the tables show what the sector distribution is. So you can see, uh, as I talked about, we added that agency security to the portfolio. And it's about 2% of the overall portfolio. Uh, commercial paper makes up about 5%. And then Treasuries is, or makes up the remainder, which is uh, 93% of the overall portfolio. Uh, from a credit perspective, uh, highly uh, rated uh, securities in in the, in the town's portfolio. Um, GS 159 doesn't uh, allow us to waiver from that. And as managers of public funds, uh, we, we, we buy highly rated papers, uh, nothing less than that. And then just to show you that we're in compliance with the investment policy, uh, as I talked about, um, the current policy allows certain limits uh, for, from the sector and also issuer. Uh, so Treasuries, you can, you can basically have 100% of the portfolio. And Treasury obligations, right now we're at 93%. Uh, we like diversification. You can also have 100% in agencies, but we're at about 2.4% right now. Uh, probably the next time I come talk to you, that number might be slightly higher with what we're seeing currently. And then uh, commercial paper uh, is another sector uh, that we are invested in. And you saw that on the previous slide. But the uh, the policy allows us to invest in 15%, uh, no more than 5% in any one issuer. Uh, and we're at about 4.5% uh, in the overall sector. So still uh, very under the, the overall sector. And and uh, about two, about one and a half percent on the uh, issuer limit for the three issuers that we have in the town's uh, portfolio. And with that, that is the uh, end of my presentation. In the appendix section, uh, I just added some additional detail about the monetary and fiscal uh, policies that have been implemented. If you are wondering, uh, I'm not going to go through them. But I believe you all have copies of this presentation. So if you're wondering what the Fed has done in terms of adding liquidity programs and also what Congress has implemented with the CARES Act and 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 the like, uh, this is just some additional uh, detail uh, of what's in it and what's been done thus far.
Okay, um, Craig, we'll, 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 we'll go around and see if others have, have questions. Um, if um, if you care to project, um, do you see the markets uh, still viewing favorably the actions of both the uh, uh, the Congress and its CARES acts and and probably additional stimulus monies and or what the feds are doing? Does the, the market seem to have a, a confidence in what's being done at the present time and maybe what's being done in the fairly immediate future? Craig, are you there?
Sorry, I'm, I do want to meet, my apologies. Uh, the, the, the markets are, are um, have a favorable opinion of what's happening currently with monetary and fiscal policy. Uh, with, the Fed had their meeting last week, uh, kept rates at between 0 and 25 basis points, uh, Fed funds target rate. And also said that, uh, you know, they'll do whatever it takes to continue to support the economy. Uh, so with that, that provides some confidence to the markets that the Fed uh, will support uh, the, the various sectors within the capital market. Uh, and and we're, we're seeing, we're seeing that. I mean, you take Boeing with the challenges that they've had over the past year and a half. Uh, they did a, a fairly large bond issuance uh, last week. And it was about 25 billion to kind of shore up their longer-term liquidity. And and they've got favorable terms on that. It was a high-yield uh, issuance, but it got favorable coupons and 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 it was actually oversubscribed. So essentially they had 70 billion in orders, but they only needed 25 uh, in their view. So it, when you have a, a large sizable issuance like that with a, a, a challenge, somewhat challenged credit uh, and and things happen orderly with that sale, that I would think that there's, there's some confidence there and just with the Fed uh, supporting the capital market uh, and doing same, basically saying whatever it takes, they'll do it. And then also what the, the market has seen favorably is the speed in which a lot of the fiscal and monetary policies have been implemented. Uh, when you go back to 08, 09, uh, it took some time for a lot of the different stimulus programs to to kick in. There was a lot of back and forth between the two uh, uh, so um, between Congress. Um, but now, you know, you've seen the CARES Act get done pretty quickly and you've seen the Fed implement their, their various programs uh, pretty quickly to support the market. So uh, when you have that kind of speed to implement these things, uh, these different uh, programs and policies, uh, the ma, the market has that favorably. The, the one thing about the market is uncertainty. And when you have uncertainty, that, that, that uh, drives a lot of panic and 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 you can see a lot of selling happening and and driving down yields and things of that nature. But uh, when you have some certainty knowing that more programs are, are going to come out to support the economy and the Fed is continuing to say that we're going to do whatever it takes to support uh, the economy, then then that's seen as favorable. Um, I don't, I don't think we'll see the Fed increase rates or anything like that for the foreseeable future. But um, but we know that they'll, they'll support the overall economy with implementing various programs to support the different sectors that may be seeing some kind of stress.
So in some ways, we're in sort of a hang-on mood right, a mode right now.
As that, that's, a good way of putting it is, is, you know, let's, let's continue to try to find a vaccine and treatments for uh, COVID-19. And and uh, you know, you're starting to see certain states slowly open back up and, you know, we'll see what kind of impacts that's going to have. And folks are figuring out how to implement social distancing measures from the, you know, a corporate perspective and 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 local government perspective and state perspective, uh, implementing different measures. So, you know, our world, our world has definitely changed. Uh, but um, but we'll, you, you know, we're, we're hoping that the recovery is not of what you've probably been hearing, an L-shaped recovery, but more of a V. Uh, some folks are saying U too. We, we, I think, um, we're, we're probably going to see more of a U-shaped recovery, if anything, um, now.
Okay, I'm going to go around the uh, around the uh, what would ordinarily be the dais and give each uh, member an opportunity to either make comments and or to ask a question at this point. And then uh, we'll see if we can summarize. I'll start with uh, Mr. Matthews, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, you asked, you asked the very question I was going to ask, was about predictions on the future. And uh, other than that, that's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Behringer?
I don't have any questions. Just appreciate Mr. Robinson's reports. It's always very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and Mr. Vance?
Uh, questions have been asked and answered. I have none. Thank you.
Okay, is Mr. Singleton with us yet?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Welcome, sir. We knew you were scheduled to come in. I don't know how much of the presentation you heard, but if you have questions or comments, I'd be happy to hear from you.
Yes, I appreciate the information, Craig. It's a, obviously a lot different than it was just a few months ago. But I do appreciate the information that you've given us and our written report. Uh, and thanks. Be interested to see what happens in the next, uh, the next quarter, that's for sure.
Absolutely. Okay, and uh, let's see, Mr. Dellinger?
Uh, no, just uh, thank you for the information, the presentation. And um, uh, if you could just provide uh, Mr. Dickerson with some of the similar data you have here with some of the costs backed out, I'd just be curious to see that. Um, other than that, thank you very much.
No, absolutely. I'll, I'll be sure to share that until you have that information.
Thank you.
Okay, Craig. Um, and let me see, I'm dating myself a little bit by commenting. I know the last time you were here, we're always uh, asking about your uh, youngest, do you, that is probably not quite so young anymore, uh, with the stay at home. And uh, how's your, how's your young child doing?
Uh, doing, doing well. Uh, I think I, I saw you, you all, I believe it was November of last year and we had just had our third. So uh, so she's now 10, 10 months old and the oldest is almost four and the middle is two and a half. So they're, they're, they're keeping me busy. All girls. So uh, exciting and loud in my house right now.
Okay. Well, congratulations to you and the best to you. Certainly stay well and stay safe. Uh, just before we conclude your part, uh, any, any closing thoughts from anybody? Or Greg, do you have any final, final thoughts? I think you've shared everything uh, in a very systematic way and I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Uh, you know, we're, we've, we've been through, I will say, uh, just a little bit about PFM. Uh, we're, we're in strong financial position. Uh, everyone is uh, working remotely currently, all 600 employees. Uh, everything seems to be going fine. Um, I've been supported very well with uh, systems. I'm all set up at home, uh, easy access to all our systems. So you guys shouldn't have any concern there about our continuity and 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 also uh, performing. Um, uh, lastly, we um, we're, we, we've dealt with this low, zero interest rate environment uh, for a while. Uh, after the financial crisis, uh, and rates went to zero in about 08, 09 and lasted until December of 2015. Uh, so we, we know how to manage through this and we'll continue to do so. And we just appreciate you all's confidence in PFM and providing investment advisory services.
Okay. Well, thank you very much uh, for your continued service and we're all hoping for better financial times for sure. Um, so we'll look forward to uh, your next report and maybe before so long, we can have a chance to maybe see you back in person again, back down in North Carolina. How's that?
Uh, would welcome that opportunity very much so, so thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. We'll uh, yeah, we'll let you sign off as you uh, need to and uh, hear from you next time. Thank you.
All right, sounds good. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Okay, there's one other uh, council presentation that I'd like to make during
Unknown participant is now exiting.
Okay, under this segment of the agenda, uh, and that is um, the fact that this week begins what is known as National Small Business Week in the United States. Uh, I was informed of that by Mr. Stallings, our um, Economic Development Director. And he cites a few statistics here that I'd like to share. He says more than half of Americans either own or work for some, for a small business. And small businesses create about two out of every three new jobs in the United States each year. Pretty phenomenal statistics. And I'm sure every council member knows several persons, and it may be many persons who are involved, who, who are involved in small businesses. And obviously we're aware that they are really suffering at this point in time. Um, as part of this week's celebration, uh, I'd like for us to show at this time a video. Uh, the Choose Local and Small You All Group has produced this video and it's made up of 43 local businesses. So it's a video about a minute long. We'll show it at this time.
When you choose local and small, you are champions.
We're the backbone of your local economy and the soul of your community.
Local and small businesses are the heartbeat of your neighborhood.
All of us want you to know that we appreciate your support to keep us going during this unprecedented time.
You choosing local makes a big difference.
Please keep getting takeout, ordering gift cards and sharing our posts.
So who you choose to support today will determine who survives tomorrow.
We need you now, more than ever.
We need you now, more than ever. So please, choose local and small, y'all.
Thank, thank you all. For the benefit of Councilmember Singleton, we understand that video, the audio portion of that was, was available to all of those who are viewing. It was not available to the council. So thank you. Thank you very much for that. I'm now going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Two items there. I would entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda. So, okay, so moved. And seconded by Mr. Vance, is that right, Mr. Vance?
Seconded, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any question or any comment? Hearing none. All in favor of approving consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And it is so ordered. Okay, following the agenda, there are no public hearings scheduled for this evening. So we will now go to the section of our agenda under new and old business. And I will recognize our town manager, who will speak to us in regards to a pay policy.
Mayor Town Council, thank you for this opportunity. A week ago at the work session, we discussed, at the point, at, at that time, we were referring to it as hazard pay. As you'll see in your agenda, we're referring to it as COVID allowance pay. And we're keeping somewhat consistent with what Wake County is calling it. Sometimes hazard pay has a different connotation. But we're calling it COVID allowance pay. And we created a policy based on the discussion we had. And we also took a look at the Wake County policy, in which we had just received when we had our meeting last week. So we wanted to go back and take a look at that, recognizing that they're set up a little different than we are in some departments. We wanted to look at their policy and apply it to the town of Garner. One thing we wanted to look at is applying it, applying it fairly equally, and just kind of looking at the intent of the policy, which is to give a extra allowance to those that are not able to main social distancing for, you know, a pretty good ample amount of time on their job. So as we looked at this, and I looked at it, and I began to think about, you know, those that are within close proximity, and at some time during their job, they may have to have contact with other humans. So they certainly can't have social distancing in that, that manner. And so looking at that, went back and decided to make this policy effective for first responders. I believe at this point in time that others, for a great deal of their job duties, can maintain social distancing. And we always have the ability to reevaluate that if conditions change with other employees. But at this time, should the council choose to implement this policy, I'm recommending that it be for the first responders. And for fire, we're looking at the operational positions from battalion chief and below. And then also in police, we're looking at more of the operational positions of sergeant and below. Those are the ones that are going to be your first responders, the ones that are primarily out in the field. So what we're looking at there is a 5% increase in salary for those hours in which they're in that condition where they're not able to maintain social distancing at, at times. You see, we have a chart in here of the cost estimates. I believe those costs can be carried, especially in police, through some lap salary that they have. And at this time, fires are looking for any internal salary line items in which they may have make up the amount for their costs. But if not, we'll make adjustments and come back with a budget amendment later. It wasn't necessary at this time. We have time to do that. But that's where we are now. This policy is, we're not sure if any of these costs are going to be reimbursed through any federal government programs or any of the money the county has. But we just feel like if the council desires to do this, it's going to be based on the fact that we may not get reimbursed, which is fine. Like we think we have some areas we can cover this, and we'll bring back a budget amendment if we find out we don't have any internal funds to cover within those departments. So with that, I would ask, there's any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm sure you're right about the issue of any reimbursement, even though I was on a conference call today, and there was some discussion about some of the monies coming from the feds and allocations made to states and even the counties, and whether or not that may be an element of that. But you're right, at this point, there's certainly no guarantee. So, okay, council members, questions, comments? I'll start with Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dickerson, this would go into effect as of what day? And I'm going to assume dangerous word here, that it'll, it'll run till this process ends. Is that safe on my part?
Yes. Well, I failed to mention that important part of it. It's effective, retroactive, back to April 16th. That's when Wake County opened its emergency operations center. And the plan is for this to continue until the emergency operations center is closed. So since we modeled this after Wake County, we'll likely follow their, their deadline for when this ends. But we put a provision in the policy that it's at the council's discretion, since it's towns' money and the town's policy felt like it should be a true discretion. But right now, we're, we're looking to follow Wake County's guideline to when the, the state of emergency ends or the EOC is closed.
Okay, thank you.
Which at this time is unknown.
Okay, yes, thank you. Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Rodney, the employees, fire and the police employees, they receive this in their normal pay period, correct? They'll get, they'll get their, every, every two weeks when they get their pay, their normal pay period, correct?
That's correct. Once we make the adjustments, it'll be in their bi-weekly pay period. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Behringer?
I don't have any questions, sir.
Okay. One, one other piece of information I would add is, just so you'll know, just for clarity, Wake County included allowance pay for some of the administrative positions under their policy, recognizing they're dealing with, you know, 19 fire department agencies. And some of those chiefs do various things. Some of them, you know, go out in the field, maybe more than hours. But we just wanted to keep it consistent between our two departments and just the essence of what the policy was calling for with those that were out in the field and were in more, more harm's way of having contact.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vance?
No, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Uh, no questions. Just thank you for taking all of our input from the last meeting on pretty short notice. And also with some of the guidelines coming from the county on short notice, and synthesizing all of that into a policy. It's a short timeframe to do that. So, good job.
Okay, yes, I would join Mr. Dellinger in expressing appreciation to the town manager for the quick turnaround there. So the issue before us is council prepared to approve this policy and authorize the implementation, excuse me, the implementation of saying. If so, I'll entertain a motion of that effect.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved that we accept the proposed proposal presented for COVID allowances, allowance pay for first responders. The estimates presented are retroactive, beginning April 16th, 2020, continuing until the emergency operations center is closed.
Suck it.
Okay, then motion's been made properly seconded. Any other questions, discussions, comments? Okay, hearing none. I'll call on council to vote on the motion. As you just heard it, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Please say no. And it is passed unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is another recommendation from our town manager. So, Mr. Dickerson, I'll recognize you now.
Okay, Mayor. Um, so back when the police chief resigned and moved on, you know, I appointed a interim police chief, and that was at the beginning of November, actually, November 1st was the start date. And from there, put it, put into plans, a process to fill that position. Well, with COVID-19, felt like it was feasible, put that on hold, just not knowing what, what candidate pool we would have, you know, with limitations on travel, with a lot of law enforcement dealing with COVID-19 in the region and certainly the nation, and that it could be problematic to try to run a assessment center process and trying to get assessors and just dealing with all the logistics that come with that. So when I put that on hold, I, I had mentioned to council that I thought it would be only fair to compensate the interim chief at the time for the extra time as interim. And so I put together a recommendation here, and that would cover the time passed and the anticipation that he's going to be interim for a few more months. I, I got some plans to get the process back on track. I know the, the firm we're working with has put some policies in place and some practices that will allow them to do some things virtually. And I feel like they have a process that will allow us to move forward in the near future. I think right now, our folks are really busy working through some things. So I'll, I'll likely not post this for another month or two. But we're going to plan on trying to get this position filled by the end of summer. Also, the captain, Lori Smith, who stepped in and took over some duties when interim chief Benz was put in place, she, she was never compensated any extra because she didn't actually switch positions. But I know she took on some extra duties and helped the interim chief as he transitioned into that position. So I'm also recommending a one-time lump sum for her also. So I have a $6,000 lump sum payment for interim chief Benz and a $3,000 interim lump sum payment for Captain Lori Smith. With that, after going a few months, not knowing when the position was going to be filled, several of the other, the captain position went unfield for a while. And then interim chief Benz decided to move some officers up into those positions. So some officers moved from lieutenant to captain, and then another officer moved from sergeant to lieutenant. And with those interim positions, as per town policy, they receive a percentage, percentage bump on their salary. So feel like they've been compensated fairly, and just wanted to compensate the two others, one that hadn't been compensated, and then the interim chief for the extended amount of time as a interim. So I'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dickerson. And let me see, at this point, I'll just sort of open it up without going around the horn, so to speak, unless we miss somebody. So anybody has a question or comment for Mr. Dickerson?
I, I have one. You mentioned that you plan to put the process back in place to find the new chief within a month. But have you thought about what, what you would do if the COVID-19 thing does not improve and we remain under some of the same restrictions we are now?
There's so many unknowns. So at some point, I think, you know, I'm going to have to decide to move forward and, you know, see what candidate pool we get and go from there. I mean, we have strong internal candidates that we know there's some interest there. So, and like I said, working with the firm, third-party search firm that we're working with, they feel like they have a process in place, get good candidates in here, and to also have a extensive evaluation process also.
Okay, thank you.
Could be at least two months though, before I advertise it. Just looking at the timing.
I agree with that. You, you can't, cannot actually put the world on hold because, you know, you know, the town's business does go on. And, and I like that thought that once we got this settled in, as quickly as can, go ahead and move forward with that process. Because let's face it, business at every capacity is doing what we're doing tonight. And granted, when it gets to the, down to the final selection, whatever that process is, that's most certainly when you want to do the one-on-one in person, and that, that could be accommodated, I'm sure. But in the meantime, go ahead and move forward on the search program because, you know, business is still going on out there. And we don't need to stop for that, I don't think. Thank you.
Okay. And I would just encourage council to sort of stay focused on the issue at hand, which is the approval of allocation of salaries. Certainly the issue about selecting a police chief is, is an issue out there. But I believe the, if, if you would comment specifically on approving this proposal, that would be helpful. Anybody else have a thought or a comment about the proposal for these lump sum payments?
I would say I think it's a good proposal. I think they're very modest gestures, but definitely significant, given the added workload and the transition time. So I, I would be in favor of this.
Good. Anybody else they haven't heard from?
If you're ready to make a whole motion, I'll be glad to make one.
Please do, Mr. Singleton.
We're certain manager's recommendation to approve the additional allocation to the salaries for both interim chief Benz and for also Captain Smith.
Suck it.
Okay, properly made and seconded. The motion has been. Any other discussion or comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And it is so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. We are now at the place on our agenda for committee reports. I'm not aware of any committees, or I haven't been notified of any committees that would need to make a report. But are there any, that any council member is aware of? Hearing none, we will move to item K on the agenda, which is the item of the manager reports. So, Mr. Manager, you're still up?
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, you have in your agenda Garner info report. See, there's a few items there. I think we were able to close several of the junk car items that we had. So the list is smaller. There's still some items on here that are a bit dated. And we did do, reach out to departments just to make sure we got some up-to-date info. So I've got, I do have at least one update on one of those, I think pertaining to a tree and on Fifth Avenue. And that's been completed already. I know what some of these junk car requests we have here, that, you know, our enforcement is working with some of these owners for the best outcome, considering, you know, they're not able to get out and do some of the work and the things that they would need to do to get these gone. But we'll continue to follow up on that. Any questions?
Okay, council, no questions on that particular issue, I don't believe.
And then you have the building activity report. I think for now, it's showing pretty strong permitting.
Yes, I would agree.
Any questions on that? If there's no questions on either of those, I'd like to go to the information that I sent you earlier. Excuse me while I get my paperwork here together. Sent you a recommendation from myself and the Park and Rec Director, Dr. Sonya Shaw, the status of July 3rd. It was just coming to a point where we needed to make some decisions on that. There's some key deadlines with some significant expenditures, one being the symphony. I know in our contract with the symphony, there's no cancellation clause. So we would have to pay them anyway, even if we decided to cancel, had we signed the contract. That's under normal conditions. I'm not sure if we would have altered that or not. And then we have the firework contract, and then various other contracts, you know, like the, the- Um, you know, like the uh, the uh inflatables and the gaming area for the kids. We have parking service. We also have a uh, a transit service that helps transport the patrons from the park to their cars at a central location. Uh, and then just various other performers. Um, just a whole host of um costs that we um thought best under the conditions with the CDC and some of the other guidelines suggesting that we not have any uh gatherings. Uh, and as you know, our gathering is well over the, the guidance number that they're giving. Uh, we tend to see, you know, ten thousand, fifteen thousand uh patrons come out to um July third. So under the conditions, we felt like uh by July uh, those guidelines probably will not be lifted. We didn't wanna take a chance on signing any contracts at this time. So um, we do have um Dr. Shaw on the call with us, so if she has anything to add.
Okay, um, Dr. Sonia Shaw, uh we'll recognize you at this point or unless you want to just maybe uh your comments or questions or anything you'd like to say at this time?
Sure thing. Good evening, council. Good seeing everyone's face, it's been a while. I'm glad to be before you, but not necessarily on this subject matter because this is certainly our favorite event. It's our town's signature event. And this is a very difficult um decision to try and come to terms or come to grips with um amid the um coronavirus epidemic. So it's been really challenging trying to think through this and possibly come up with alternatives and those not necessarily being the best um, um for us either moving forward. So as Rodney said, after a lot of deliberations, talking and thinking through alternatives for July third, um along with our public works and our police department, who certainly support us in this large effort uh for this event. Um, we are unfortunately recommending um cancellation of our July third celebration. And most of that is, is Rodney's already alluded to. Um, we've got contracts that we need to get in place in the event. We are gonna move forward with this. We're eight weeks out and by this time, we are pretty much settled in and have a majority of the work done for this large uh festival that we host each year. So uh, given the guidance that we're getting um from our National Recreation and Park Association along with our state association and guidelines from CDC regarding uh mass gatherings. Um, um, it's gonna be a while before we get back to our new normal, normal, whatever it is that we uh prefer to uh in the coming year. And a majority of the large festivals that are our size or larger, uh what we're hearing is that most of these events will not return until the fall of twenty twenty-one. Um, so we've, we, we're really, really on the early end of that. And if our larger festivals, music concerts, sporting venues, um musical tours that groups um have literally canceled at this point are following suit, then we are certainly concerned about the direction for our July third festivities as well.
Okay, okay. Um, uh, and I'm not surprised to hear of uh cancellation of these type things. I've heard of some other areas in North Carolina and you alluded to uh, or the memo alludes to some as well. Um, so um, at this point, uh Rodney, that, that's, that's your presentation, right? We're not hearing from anybody else and we'll go around the council and uh, uh allow council to ask questions or make comments. Okay? Uh, so I'll start with uh, I'll start with uh Mr. Vance.
Uh, yes, Dr. Shaw, do you have any idea what the other municipalities are doing relative to the Fourth of July celebration? I know that Raleigh has a, a large one typically and possibly uh Wake Forest and the other municipalities. Do you have any idea they're doing?
Well, most people are in a holding pattern right now, just trying to see what uh will happen moving forward. Um, the only um local ones that have canceled have been the city of Greensboro. They've canceled their um large um fireworks festivities. And Southport would be the other um local North Carolina group canceling theirs as well. So those are the two that are in front right now. A lot of people, again, as we said, are just kinda uh waiting to uh hear what guidance we're gonna get and really holding out hope that things are gonna change. But as we get closer and closer, um I'm on a call each uh Monday with uh Parks and Recreation Directors across the state. And um they are all looking to uh get guidance from their councils as well if they will actually cancel these events.
And uh council member Vance, I was on the call with some managers a few days ago. And anecdotally, I know that there's gonna be other cancellations. However, they were not ready to make any announcement. So I'm really not at liberty to mention who they were, but there's gonna be other local cancellations.
Right.
And, and I would just interject, yeah, I, I, I don't have anything specific. But in some uh conversations, uh phone conversation I've had, I would uh confirm what uh Mr. Vance is saying. I think some are not yet ready to uh make a public pronouncement, but I think you will certainly hear of others. Um, okay, thank you, Mr. Vance. Uh, Mr. Dellinger?
Uh, I just wanna say, I mean, I have some data to share later, but I think that any event, particularly an event of this nature, that is gonna bring in a large influx of people, not, not just Garner folks, they're coming from other places, um sitting around for long periods of time. Uh, it, it's, it's really, it's unfortunate. It's really, I think it's very sad. Um, but I think that, you know, you have, I think the staff have their focus on the right thing, which is the safety of everyone who comes to Garner and all of our residents. Um, it's just, you know, I think we can all be a little sad about it. Um, but I think it's, it, just in the day and time we're in, I think a lot of other professional sports leagues that have similar sized crowds, ten, twenty thousand people coming to games, they're evaluating how they will or will not more than likely have their functions. And this function's no real different than that when it comes to large groups. Um, so I, I appreciate the, the time that staff has put in, public work and the police and pu- and Parks and Rec to make this recommendation. Um, and I, I respect you all, your professional assessment uh of what is probably the best course of action here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dellinger. I'll hear from uh Mr. Singleton.
Have we had any contact with the uh, with the symphony? They said they're not performing at any places, uh, now that they're here on the third, then carry on the fourth. They have something else on the fifth. Have we had any contact with them?
We have not um spoken to see if they plan on perform, performing anywhere else yet.
Okay. Well, I, I, I'll just go ahead and tell you, I don't like this at all. Uh, I, I mentioned to Rodney and John and Matt, uh one or two or three of them, I can't remember. Uh, just some sense of normalcy of, of just even having a long extended fireworks, have people driving their cars, staying in their cars in the park out there, facing fireworks. To have some sense of normalcy for people to get back to doing things because eight weeks ago, there was no orders to close anything. And eight weeks from now, who knows how it'll be? We don't know. And I know you got contracts, but uh, I, I think we've already made one mistake, my opinion on the parade. Of course, everyone know and I voted against it. I voted against the recommendation of the four one vote, you know, it came out the public and, you know. Anyway, I didn't, I didn't think we should cancel the parade. I thought we should have, we, we had, you know, ordinance to deal with the issue. We didn't do it. Um, so uh, I still am in favor of having fireworks, having people come in their cars, park. I mean, you're having driving truck services. I mean, people are in line at Walmart and Target and so forth. I have to still grasp why we, we can't do this, not have the vendors, not gonna have the symphony, why you can't have a long thirty, thirty, thirty-five, forty minute fireworks program for people to get out and enjoy something and get some sense of normalcy back. I really don't, I'm just very disappointed. And again, eight weeks, I think you're gonna see July third, July four celebrations changed, not like they were. But I still think you're gonna have something so people can get out and see things. And I'm disappointed that we're not trying to focus on that way. I read where we thought about different venues and I appreciate that. But I do see the logistic nightmare with that, having police and public works and, and Parks and Rec having to be at three different sites to try to do that. I, I get that. I just think we should try to have fireworks and have people come in and tell them they gotta stay in their cars, park the cars ten feet apart and say, you can't get out of your cars. You gotta stay in the car and watch. Uh, you know, that's the way it is. Anyway, that's just my opinion. I hate that we're gonna cancel it again. Now, we already made one mistake with Christmas parade. I'm afraid we're making, we're getting ready to make mistake, make mistake number two. By disappointing our public when I think there are alternatives up there to have a part of the program, not all of them, but a part of it. I'd be quite.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. Um, I will recognize Ms. Barriger.
Well, I, um, mixed feelings. I, I want everybody to be safe and I know that people in crowds tend to behave differently than they do one-on-one. Um, I would like to have had a little bit more advanced warning that we were gonna discuss this tonight, just so we would get some more information, like has the uh symphony canceled other, other uh appearances? Um, as I said, I want everybody to be safe. Uh, I wish that we could do a fireworks display with people in their cars. I don't think as many people will come anyway with the scale, if we scaled it down. Um, but it's an unknown. Uh, uh, one question I have though is that Memorial Day, I know there's usually a celebration. Uh, I think it's a private celebration on Memorial Day. Is that scheduled to go on or do we know yet?
We are in conversations now um about that. Uh, currently, any um mass gathering over ten people currently uh or any gra- gathering over ten people is not allowed at this point. Um, we are looking at what we do with the Memorial Day celebration and depending upon what announcement we get over the coming weeks, that could possibly be uh canceled as well.
Do you know what the attendance of that celebration usually is, the average attendance?
Um, they're typically over a hundred. So we're still even out of the a hundred people range, about one fifty or so, yes.
So it's, it's possible that uh, that the July third celebration would be not allowed under the uh, the order to not have more than fifty people or whatever. That could be extended and would cover this as well, I mean, July third, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and we really don't know when we'll know that, is that right?
That's right.
That is gonna have to show some improvement and then we'll go into that phase program that the governor talked about, the three-phase.
And right, and right now, um, the phase three um moves to uh increasing the numbers of mass gatherings, but not in the thousands is what we're anticipating. It's not gonna hit the thousands um that quickly.
The decision may well be made for us anyway.
Yes.
Is that?
Right. And our, and our challenge with bringing this is not um necessarily the, the, the date of July third itself. We, we certainly think that um there'll be things that will take care of this for us and that we, you know, won't be in a situation where we'll um be able to host the event either way. Uh, I think our concerns are certainly about the um, um, the cost savings that if we don't cancel at a certain date, then that ties us to several contracts. Um, and if we are in an economic uh situation now that we're currently facing, um, are those monies we wanna save or are those monies that we are willing to forego in the event and hopes that things may change?
Is there uh any thought about something else, some kind of statement that we could make to reassure the public um that this was well thought out and that we feel like we had no choice for the public safety? Uh, a- and the reason I, I bring this up is that I, there are many people in this town who, yes, they could go to the town website, but they don't. Uh, we don't have a newspaper. Are we going to do a mailer of some sort that will inform them? Uh, I know there's a cost involved with that, but uh, I, I talk to people all the time. Okay, well, I just don't, you know, I wish we had this, I wish we had that. I know we can't make them all happy, but there, there's a not, large number of them that just are not gonna use their computer like they should. Now, we can't make them, they're free not to.
Right.
So what kind of statement are we gonna make? Has that been discussed yet?
Well, it, we've not necessarily come up with the actual language for it. Um, we've been working on closing, you know, language to close our programs, to shut our facilities down. So it wouldn't be, um, it wouldn't be a huge undertaking for us to communicate that. Um, and as you mentioned, people are coming from everywhere for this event that make it very difficult for us to um get the word out. But we can certainly consider a number of avenues that we have with our marketing team and their outreach efforts and get the word out as uh we have with um past closures and event. Um, and again, this was a very, very difficult decision. Um, and we considered, do we shoot the fireworks at Lake Benton alone? Um, and have people in their cars, as Mr. Singleton mentioned. Uh, we vetted that, we talked about it. And the challenge with that is Lake Benton itself, uh we could probably park about two thousand, twenty-five hundred cars alone in it. And that's packing cars in. So if we're talking about adding the ten-foot distance between those cars, then we could likely cut that number in half. And then we have multiple entrances in the park and we have a number of walkers that enjoy walking from their homes so they don't have to be in traffic. Um, so what do we do then when we have groups that are gathering outside of their vehicles um in the park space? So a lot of thought did go into this and we certainly vetted it. And I definitely don't want you all or, or the public to think that this was just something we randomly came to and didn't really think through, how is it that we can get to a yes for July third? Um, and that was our goal in terms of coming up with the alternative plans. How can we get to a yes, given the circumstances we're on now? It, it just created health, safety issues for um the general public as well as staff in trying to pull this event off.
I don't doubt that you spent a lot of time working on it, but we hadn't heard that. And we found out late this afternoon that we will reconsider this tonight. And I, I'm not one of those people. I like some time to think it through.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Town council, but having recently gotten this and with the May fifteenth deadline, we don't, our next meeting's May nineteenth. So I thought the council would wanna talk about this in a public forum, so that our next opportunity would have been after the deadline. So that's one reason I'm bringing it to you.
Deadline for making the decision?
Uh, May fifteenth, our contractual obligations for, fine.
Well, if we could include, you know, if, find out if the symphony is canceling their engagements and if you can include that in the public announcement, that certainly helps a little bit. Um, if they feel like that, that the vendors or the folks that were going to be here like they normally are July third have said, no, we're not coming because it's not safe, it might be a little easier for the public to uh handle that.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Matthews. I don't believe I've, you had an opportunity to weigh in yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, part of my income is doing sound for festivals and bands and all types of things of that nature. And what's come down, uh, what's happened is every major band in the world setting idle. They're losing revenue. All the clubs are losing revenue and the festivals. The biggest event for our fireworks vendor, I will assure you, is July third and fourth, maybe a new year. And the biggest event for the symphony, I am thinking, is probably between the third and the fourth. Now, here's, now I'm gonna step into the business world here. Now, we say the fifteenth to cutoff, but I'm finding out flexibility is, is the loss of revenue has become a very, very big word. Now, when I, what I mean by that, we could contact the symphony and cause they got the same issue with every other municipality in North Carolina with nothing new. And see, if that deadline, due to this situation, they will consider narrowing it down and giving us more flexibility on time just to see what's gonna happen. The fireworks people, the same thing. I will guarantee you, the fireworks people will work with us because they want the business. And for what we pay the symphony, I'm thinking they're gonna want the business because it's gonna be a big loss of revenue for them, for the municipalities. But if we contact just those two vendors alone, since that's the most expensive part uh of this production, is fireworks and, and the symphony, and see what kind of flexibility we can get on our drop dead date to move it closer in their direction. So, cause you know, they are waiting to see what we're waiting to see and getting information that we're getting to see. Now, if they say, well, we'll give you fifteen days out, and that's just hypothetical there. We'll give you fifteen to twenty days out is your deadline. But that's fine, it's better to work within what we got right now. And that'll give us the entire month of May uh into the June window to see what's gonna happen with all of this. And that'll give us the entire month of May, uh, into the June window to see what's gonna happen with all of this. So a lot can happen, is what I'm saying here. And it's, but this is going on everywhere in the entertainment industry. Rather than lose that revenue, or lose that opportunity, everybody is getting flexible. And I would be willing to bet, and I've dealt with Symphony at county level, flexibility is probably gonna be in their, their work too, because if they're not playing, they're not getting paid. And same move to fireworks. So, uh, with what all is going on, I think these two phone calls should be happening tomorrow to both of them. And let them know, we still want to do business, but we gotta have flexibility because our hands are tied right now, because as Rodney said, we don't know what we don't know. And, uh, rather than make a snap decision tonight, if they will narrow that window back in fifteen to twenty days out, what's going on? That'd give the council as well as the staff an opportunity to evaluate this thing, see what the possibilities are. So I just want to throw that into the mix from the business standpoint that I'm in, because right now with everybody in the entertainment, flexibility is the word and everybody's trying to help and work and make things happen. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Town Manager and my fellow colleagues, I think this would give us a little extra time to think this thing out. And I know Ms. Behringer makes a good point. I know I'd like to have more time to see what we can do here rather than make a snap decision tonight. So just, just a thought, Rodney and Sonia, Mr. Mayor. Uh, let's call both on the morning, see what how flexible they are.
Okay, um, two, two, two things I think we should keep in mind, or at least one in particular. I, I don't think it was mentioned here, but, um, I think one of the alternatives that was made in the written memo was the possibility of, uh, if we don't have the fireworks at the July third event, that perhaps by the time we get to, uh, uh, Labor Day, I believe it is, that perhaps, uh, that could be used as a time for fireworks, with the amount of delaying it, uh, for a little while. Uh, so that was an alternative and, um, uh, I, I would just make the comment that we, we, we certainly aren't in a boat by ourselves. Maybe this is what you were making, Phil, but I would make it in a different way. Uh, I usually have and do, uh, have tickets to the Durham Bulls over in Durham and uh, those, those, those folks are certainly not starting their season. Uh, they've had to make that decision early on. I don't know what their plans are going forward, but obviously it has a lot to do with other decisions that are made about mass gatherings and those kinds of things. And so I think, obviously, what, what was presented to you tonight was perhaps a little short notice, but given the contractual agreements that we had, uh, and we weren't gonna meet again until after the deadline. So, uh, it's possible, we can certainly find out uh, what the intent of the Symphony is. Um, and I, what do you think, Mr. Town Manager? Do you want to vote on this tonight or, uh, you, you, you?
If the council takes more time, we'll just, you know, we'll, um, see what we can find out over the next few days. And, um, you know, I can hear from you all and, um, see what other alternatives there are. Um, we'll have to find that information out and then we'll have to figure out how to work the crowd control, uh, and those type of things. And then with the cars, um, I know one issue we thought about with the cars is the sight view, um, the lines of sight for everybody to see and not be tempted to get out of their cars. So, um, we'll, we'll see what other information we can find out and just uh, see what other alternatives there are.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Extend that deadline, that's really important.
Okay. Uh, well, let's see, I'll recognize Mr. Dellinger and then I'll go around to everybody again.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to Gray's point and kind of the points being made, I think the staff is sort of making the assumption, I think it's the smart one, that the decision will be made for us whether or not we do July fourth the way we normally do it. That decision is probably out of our hands. I think, um, what I would like to see, and I think, um, Gray alluded to this as well, and Mr. Matthews did, did too, is, is one, I think we need to look at some alternatives for things we are actually going to do on that weekend to celebrate as a town. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know, I have no idea, but I think we need to do something on that weekend um, to acknowledge the Fourth of July and celebrate somehow. I don't know what that looks like. The other is, I think it, it's, I think it's pretty clear that the restrictions that are gonna be in place from the state side are not gonna allow our celebration on the third, but I think a postponement with a reassessment to a later date is probably the thing to do. Um, because we don't know likelihood that the state restrictions are gonna be lifted by the third in a way that can allow people, all the people that want to come to come and in a safe way, it's not likely. What August, September look like, I think is a lot more uncertain. Um, so those are sort of my comments. I'd like to see some sort of alternate plans for things, something to do on the third. There are a lot of places that, I mean, I guess, um, Dr. Shaw and Rodney talk with a lot of folks. You're gonna hear from a lot of communities on things they're doing that are different. There are a lot of people who are doing parades, maybe there's a some type of light parade that goes through, I don't even know. Um, but I like to see some alternatives and I think looking at a postponement is probably smart and then talking to the Symphony to say, hey, would you still be willing for a postponed engagement at some point later in the fall? Those are sort of my thoughts right now. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Behringer, were you wanting to, uh, join back in?
Well, I would just like to say, I would like to hear what the Symphony and the folks who do the fireworks have to say. And then, um, you know, move, move from there. As we've said, very likely that it will be out of our hands anyway. But, uh, but we do need to communicate some desire to either have another event later on or to make sure that the public understands that this was not a decision made lightly and that it was in the public safety and the best interest of those fe- folks who would be coming.
Okay, one last time, um, we'll try to wrap this up and, uh, anybody else want to come in?
Mr. Mayor, the last thing that I'll share on this is that we have, um, already reached out to, um, Zambelli, who does our fireworks shows and they had, they've issued, um, their deadlines probably about two, a month or so ago, um, for those fireworks occurring between Ju- June twenty-ninth through July twelfth, because they are um, a major produ- producer of fireworks shows. And the deadline that they have given, they're sticking to pretty closely as, uh, forty-five days prior to the show. So we've already received that information, um, and they are pretty stringent on keeping that deadline in place. So for us, that would mean May nineteenth would be the date we'd have to, um, go ahead and, uh, notify them that we are either gonna have the event we're canceling or the possibility of postponement without losing any of our funds, um, for the fireworks show.
Okay, thank you very much for that information. And so, uh, Mr. Manager, if we, uh, if we decided to table this item to give staff time to make these inquiries of the Symphony anyway, we already know pretty much where they, where the vendor for the fireworks stands, um, we will be meeting, uh, again, uh, would it be, is it on the nineteenth? We have our next scheduled meeting, sir?
It's on the nineteenth, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, well, uh, let's see, Mr. Baggett is, uh, is out there somewhere. I haven't recognized him yet, but, uh, I'm, I'm supposing that the course of action that could be taken at this point, if we don't want to do a formal vote, is to, is to table this matter? Or should we, uh, would the term be postponing it until, uh, May the nineteenth for a decision at that time?
I would suggest using the term postponement, uh, with a motion to that effect.
Okay.
And Mayor, if you could, you might want to leave the date open because it's possible we may have to call a special meeting, uh, to make this decision, because with it being on the nineteenth and the decision having to be made on the nineteenth, and we, we do not normally meet until the evening, uh, it's probably better to leave it open right now.
I bet if you contact the vendor and tell them we'll meet on the nineteenth, you can call them on the twentieth, on Wednesday the twentieth and give your decision. I don't think they're gonna jump, uh, uh, go crazy off of one day, tell them beforehand what we're doing.
Yeah, we plan to do that. I just don't want to, I couldn't guarantee that that would work, but I had that in mind already.
They're gonna lose a lot of business. If the fireworks guy, he holds everybody to forty-five days, he might as well pack up the gunpowder, because it ain't gonna work. He's gotta be.
All right, all right, all right, Council. I, I think, I think we've heard probably, uh, uh, appropriate, appropriate number of, uh, comments here. So I sense that a motion is in order to postpone this, uh, particular proposal until more, uh, information can be accumulated. And if things are in order, we could make a decision on the nineteenth, but that's not a, uh, that's not a drop dead date. So, um, does somebody care to make that in the form of a motion?
So moved. Second?
Okay, probably moved and seconded. All council members understand that we're voting on a postponement of this issue, subject to further information with a possible vote on the nineteenth. All those in favor of the, uh, motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, and it is so ordered. So, uh, uh, we, we will, uh, we will take that issue back up at, uh, probably our next meeting. Is there anything missing on that, Mr. Baggett, that I should have covered?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, all right, we are now, uh, Mr. Manager, that completes your reports. Am I correct on that, sir?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Attorney, uh, do you have any reports for us, sir?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I will go to council reports, um, and I'll take the privilege of just mentioning something I've mentioned on several occasions, and that is, uh, encourage all of our citizens, uh, who have not yet participated in the twenty-twenty census to, uh, please consider the, uh, importance of this event and I would urge you all to be counted. And, uh, I think we'll send out a, a follow-up, uh, probably in the utility bills to try to reach as many people as possible. I know our communications department is doing, uh, all it can to, uh, to make sure the word is out on that. So, uh, so I urge all of our citizens, if you haven't been counted yet, please, uh, please fill out your census form and get it, get yourself counted. Having said that, I will now go to council reports and I will start, uh, with, uh, Mr. Dellinger this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I've only got two things, uh, brief things. Um, one is, uh, last week, the county you informed me was breaking COVID nineteen data by zip code. So I took the liberty of looking at some of that data and there are just two charts I want to share on Garner and its neighboring zip code. I don't know if anyone can see that. So this is, uh, confirmed COVID nineteen cases and deaths as of Sunday by zip code. And if you look at the two over here, you've got Garner two seven six oh nine, which is all of Garner. You've got two seven six oh three, which we know is mostly what we consider Garner. There's some Raleigh and some Fuke Way and some Johnston County there. And if you look at the other two seven six one zero, that is the zip code north of Garner. And if you look at, uh, Clayton's zip code, which is right across the border. And I just want to point that we have a very, and this is probably some of the best data we're gonna get because it's normalized by state data and state county information. The other next chart is just confirmed cases as a percentage of population. And on the, over here on the green, that's North Carolina, these are rate. And then you've got Wake County, Mecklenburg, Johnston, and then you've got our two sort of Garner zip codes. And then you've got two seven, uh, six one zero north of us, and then you've got Clayton. And the only reason I bring this up, because I think this is very dramatic data, is that I think we've done a very, very good job in Garner and we've been very fortunate that people have been complying, um, and it, it's really worked to our benefit. We've been lucky in our, our, uh, health care facilities and in our nursing homes and it has some of these major outbreaks. And as these restrictions move forward this weekend to be, I don't say lifted, they're gonna be loosened. I want to encourage people to, as you start to go out, to still continue to social distance, to still continue to wear masks when you go out in public. You're driving in your car, you don't have to. If you're walking around the neighborhood, that's okay. But when you go into businesses, there are people coming from other places now who are coming from more highly infected areas that are coming into the, our shopping our places. Wear a mask. Wear a mask for the safety of the workers that work in those places, for your own safety. Um, it, it, our, our small businesses are gonna come back faster, the more comfortable the workers are and the customers are. The more mask you see, the more people are gonna come in, they're gonna shop, they're gonna eat, they're gonna do these things. So I want, the data I show, because I think we've done a really great job. And I don't want, when the restrictions start to loosen, that we get casual about it and that we still take it seriously, because I'd love to see our numbers stay really low in Garner. And that will only happen if we continue to take, be smart and take the right precautions once we get out and about in the community. So again, you don't wear a mask for yourself, you wear it for the people working who have to engage with dozens and hundreds of people every day. And you do it for their families. They have to go back home to their kids and their wives and husbands and spouses. Um, so I just want to keep that in mind, as restrictions start to loosen, that everybody be very, very cautious and continue to engage in best practices, even if they're not required by law. That's my one thing. My only other thing is, uh, wanted an update on, uh, what the plans were for Planning Commission this month, whether they were gonna be meeting in person or if they were going to be meeting virtually.
I believe I've heard some word on that, but I will defer to, uh, our town manager, who I believe can answer that question.
My understanding may be a mixture of two. Some may, you know, come in virtually and some on site. Uh, I know there's some public comment and developers involved.
Yeah.
So trying to present that type of information virtually could be difficult. So, um, I think the plan is to exercise social distancing and have a combination of the two. Um, I would, I would ask Mr. Hodges if he has any other information on that, that's my.
We are still working out the details of that and we should have some, uh, more information that we can share later this week, just with the final plans.
Were there plans to stream those live, regardless of whether they're held in person or virtually?
Uh, staff has been discussing how they can do that to make sure that we can, so that, I think there's a plan to do that, but I'll be getting an update from staff on that tomorrow morning and can provide some follow-up with council on that.
Because I would, I would strongly recommend that we, while we have these restrictions in place, particularly there are people who are vulnerable, older people over sixty-five and these things that may want to come and come in in groups, may not be able to, and to have access to a live stream like we do on council would be very beneficial. And I think the public would be very interested in that. Um, thank you very much. Um, that's all I have. I think that there was three things that I would like, that I'm sure the town manager will be looking at that came in this bill that they just passed. Um, two were, and this is probably for Baggett, there was a clarification on the authority of local boards to conduct meetings. And I think we're probably compliant with that. And on the development side, I saw that one sixty D was delayed until August first, twenty twenty-one. That's the revision of the, uh, some of the development guidelines that were supposed to come into effect, uh, January first, I think, of twenty twenty-one. I'm sure Jeff Trezenberg knows all that, but those are two things I think the council should be aware of. They're, are relevant to, uh, sort of our ongoing decisions and operations. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir. I'm gonna go to, uh, Mr. Vance at this time.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I have a few questions. One, thanks to the, uh, the rec center. I know there was, uh, an issue with the roof leaking and gaining occupancy. I just want to get a status as to where we are, where we stand, rec center.
Okay, there, um, there are, um, a handful of leaks. Uh, we, we requested that the manufacturer get involved and look at those. Uh, after the contractor had mul- multiple opportunities to try to get those repaired, uh, the metal roof, um, manufacturer, and the manufacturer is the one that provides the warranty after the final inspection of the roof and it meets their satisfaction in their specs. So that's why we got the manufacturer, because without them approving it, we would not get a warranty. So anyway, the manufacturer of the metal roof came out on Friday and they believe they found the area of concern. The roofers were, I went by today and the roofers were on the roof, uh, repairing that area. Uh, we may not know whether that works or not to the next rain or if they test it somehow, uh, with the water hose or whatever. Um, so they think that area may have been showing up as multiple leaks because water would get in and run down this channel, this metal channel. It didn't find its way out in a couple of areas. So we've got that. Um, there's also, um, a couple of leaks on, um, the rubber roof. So we've requested that the rubber roof manufacturer come look at that. Um, we've informed the contractor of that, that we want that to happen, um, soon as possible. Um, so they're gonna be looking at, at those repairs. And, um, one other leak may have actually come through a con- conduit, so they're kind of exploring that, but, um, But, um, they're, um, still trying to get those leaks, uh, under, under wraps. And, um, that's really the major thing on the building. That's, I would almost say that's holding up occupancy because we've told the contractor that we do not want to occupy a building that has roof leaks, uh, because they're only gonna get worse or be harder to find once we get in. So that's what we're working with right now, but we've got the, the roofer out there most every day trying to get, get those handled.
Okay.
And, uh, and Mr. Hodges has been in contact with, um, um, the architect and, and some of the legal counsel. So, you know, they're giving us some, some advice on how to handle some of these issues.
Okay. And as for the, uh, the, the seventy Montague intersection piece, uh, is that, will that, will that delay any openings or anything if it, uh, guard rail sign in place?
That will likely be a council decision. However, we, we bid the roadwork and the building as one project. Um, and that includes the ponds also. So, you know, we would hope that would not keep us from moving in, but what we've told the contractor is, uh, in order for the, any liquidated damages to stop, you know, the project needs to be finished as it was bid. So we need the roadwork, ponds, and the building to be complete. However, there's a possibility we could move into the building, uh, and get some of our things in there and set up uh, before we actually open the building, uh, without the roadwork and the ponds being one hundred percent.
Mr. Dickerson, I can add one comment if I may. Um, Mr. Vance, the, the roadwork was inspected by DOT, and they have got a very minor punch list and with very, very minimal things that need to be handled from the punch list. The guardrail, um, along the highway fifty to seventy ramp is remaining to be installed. That is now waiting on, uh, Duke Energy to move some utilities that Duke originally had told the contractor did not need to be moved. So at this point in time, the delay on the guardrail is with Duke Energy. We believe that work will be, um, undertaken very soon. Uh, but right now, uh, the, the contractor themselves are not holding up what I would consider to be the last substantial item having to do with any of the roadwork. The punch list for all the markings will be done tomorrow, um, and, and most everything else is, um, is very close to completion.
Okay, and with utilities, that, that could take some time, uh, for the utility to be moved by Duke Energy. Uh, and if we're waiting on Duke Energy and not the contractor, uh, we'll, will they, will, will they, will we be able to receive their certificate of, uh, occupancy, knowing that the delay is not on the contractor but on Duke Energy?
That is the decision we will have to make. If everything else, if that is, if that remains to be the only item holding us up, I think we would need to revisit it at that time. We are working with Duke to try to get this item resolved. It should not be a very substantial move. So we're working with Duke and, and think we'll get some resolution to that relatively soon.
Okay, thank you. That's it for that question. Another question is, there is clearing going on in proximity to the, uh, New Bethel Church Road, the Mattle Creek Bridge. And I know that there was a bridge that was, a bridge project that was let some time ago, but was waiting on, uh, some things that are going on DOT and, and, uh, some, some issues that were going on there. And just want to know if that, is that clearing a part of the bridge replacement project?
Yep, yes, sir, that is. Um, that was let last year, and they had some substantial utility moves that delayed the, the contractor actually being able to start construction. Uh, DOT, uh, contacted us recently and had proposed to possibly replace the bridge during the COVID crisis without a, uh, a replacement bridge in place and using detours. Uh, we worked with Public Safety to run the numbers there to show that that was not going to be feasible. So they decided to move ahead with the construction, with the temporary bridge being put in place. Um, so the work that you see there is the contractor working on behalf of DOT to start that bridge replacement project.
Okay, uh, do we have a, uh, do we have a completion date for that?
We, I, I have a, a completion date since they've actually, um, overcome the utility work. The dates we had have long since passed. We will see if the contractor has, uh, an updated date he can provide, or they can provide.
All right, one last question in reference to the, uh, Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, uh, do we anticipate getting any funding from, uh, uh, the federal government in reference to the CARES Act?
It's not a hundred percent clear what we're eligible for. A lot of funds, a lot of those funds were passed down to the counties. And, um, I did receive some information from the county today, um, asking us if we had any, um, expenses related to COVID-nineteen. Uh, we are, we will, um, submit those to the county, uh, and then there'll be a determination of whether those are eligible. But, um, on our own, it doesn't appear we're, we're eligible for anything. And I don't know if you noticed, but the funding that went out today through the state, that the state approved, uh, Wake County, Mecklenburg County, and Guilford Counties were not allocated any funds, because I think they were maybe allocated funds during the first round, uh, a previous round of funding. But, um, it's not a hundred percent clear what we'll be able to, um, claim for reimbursement. There's FEMA, there's FEMA reimbursement, and there's CARES reimbursement, so we're trying to figure out between the two of those where we might get, um, reimbursement, if there's any, for our sides.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vance. Uh, Mr. Matthews, council report.
Uh, yes, sir. Just, we're just busy talking about Lake Benson, my favorite park out there. And I know you and I walk out there, and I know, uh, gray walks out there. Uh, I think everybody got probably copied on the email from, uh, Concerned Citizens, wondering why, uh, you know, uh, we don't have that road paved going into Lake Benson Park. This is, uh, all dirt, dusty, full of holes and what have you, and, and everything's paved on the crossroad at White Deer Park. What would be required if we could pave that interestway down into, uh, Lake Benson Park and why we hadn't done it yet? So I'm asking the question, and we'll see where it goes.
That, that, um,
Right, impervious surfaces, I believe we go ahead, Rodney.
You got it? Who's gonna answer?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Okay, all right. Well, you said the magic word, uh, impervious service, surface limits. Um, so with the amount of development we already have at Lake Benson Park, we're already close to, uh, the limit on impervious surface. And, um, putting a hard surface like asphalt on the road would take us over that. We're in a, uh, critical watershed, uh, with Lake Benson and Swift Creek, uh, watershed. Uh, so the roofs do not allow us to go over a certain percentage. I, I think it's twelve percent, but don't quote me on that. It might be even stricter in the watershed. But we can't have, uh, whatever the percentage is, um, over that in hard surface, um, that causes runoff.
Question on that, uh, so other than the big shelter out there, maybe one small shelter. Are we saying if, if it is twelve percent, that's taking a twelve percent of all that total acreage? And we have no room whatsoever to do any paving through there? I'm standing impervious and.
Right, it may be stricter than twelve, but yeah, there, there might be room. Um, because at one time we were looking at building a, another restroom. There might be room to build another smaller building or facility, but there's clearly not, um, enough to put a whole pave.
pave the whole road, yeah, that's what I had always heard. Um, and that road, uh, you know, I think throughout the year, it obviously gets some wear and tear, and, uh, it's, uh, and, and I know, uh, we, we, we try to do some grappling and stuff out there, and that needs to be done now. But it does take sort of a beating in the, in the heavy rains, uh, for sure. But, uh, yeah, the impervious surface element is not something that we can overcome to pave the whole thing, as I understand it. But, uh, Rodney would know that better than I.
And I understand, I understand what you're saying. Uh, when is the last time we really looked at those numbers, just out of curiosity? Uh, that, how much we can truly pave there i- if.
Exactly, you know, we, we looked at it longer, not, you don't want to do it. Because if you put a restroom at the front, which is talking about putting a restroom at the front, because the restrooms are so far away, that would take you right to the bumper, and a restroom is not very big. And so when, when the veterans' world, we say, remember the veterans' world is the same, and they put in the handicap spaces there, they will pave, and they can see that number. But I mean, it's been that way for twenty-seven years. I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, why are we having discussions? It's been that way for twenty-seven years. And the, the, again, the talk was that if you put restrooms near the front somewhere or hidden, you don't want restrooms prominent at front, at your front door. But anyway, that, that would eat up what was left. And so Rodney mentioned twelve percent, it may be less than that, maybe ten percent, eight. I can remember, it's a very small number, and you don't want to risk that in case something else came up. Uh, and that's why the road just never would have been touched. And again, it's been that way for twenty-seven years, and, and it's, yeah, it can get dusty and so forth, but that's, that's the worst thing we gotta put it with, we in good shape.
Yeah, we looked at it, we looked at it when, um, the handicap parking space was put in, and then we also looked at it before that when we expanded that shelter two parking lot. And we actually had to put in a water treatment facility for that. It's a, a shallow, uh, forgot what it's called, uh, um, it's not a retention pond, but it's a shallow pond kind of area.
Well, you, you've updated me. I, I just want to understand how we'd come to that figure. I understood about the impervious, and I'm sure.
White Deer Park is its own project, so it's under a whole different calculation and has, actually has more acres than Lake Benson Park. So we're able to pave more on that side than we were at Lake Benson.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And since Mr. Singleton, I'll go ahead and Ms. Behring, I'm gonna get to you. Uh, Mr. Singleton, uh, council report, council report.
Yes, uh, Damian brought the planning commission. John, do you know how many, uh, public hearings maybe, uh, for the planning commission this, this, uh, month? And I know that's one reason they would have to get back to me because they had it for a couple of months.
I believe we have three cases going to planning commission. The, the challenge that we have coming out of planning commission, though, is the guidance that had been given prior to the legislation that was signed today was to avoid having public hearings that are quasi-judicial in nature. The legislature included language about quasi-judicial in the, the new legislation that was signed today, but there are still many unknowns as to whether or not, um, we can move forward. And Mr. Baggett may want to weigh in there, but, um, I think right now, we had hoped to bring everything out of planning commission to the June first meeting. But I don't think we know right now whether or not we can move those forward to the council on June first, if they include a quasi-judicial decision.
I agree. There, there are several important questions about quasi-judicial proceedings, uh, that are yet to be answered completely.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Um, and I reckon with the issues that, with, he talked about occupying the rec center. So it's ironic, we might get occupied sometime. We get the keys to it sometime when we're shut down, we can't use it. Um, maybe we need to hold the fireworks over there. We blow the roof off and then start over and get it right, since it's complete. Anyway, that's just a thought, but, uh, I'm gonna give my shot, give my chance to take a shot since we're two years later. So I have a little funnel in there, so I'll be quiet, I'll be nice after that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. We remember that. All right, Ms. Behring, it's your turn.
Yeah, I want to see if Mr. Single can be quiet and be nice. That, that'll be something, that'll be worth watching for. Uh, yeah, I have a few things. Um, Woodland Road, the end between Vandoor Springs Road and Timber Drive was, um, paved in the past few days. Um, looks very, very nice, and it's not full of bumps and potholes and so forth. And then the striping is all done. Uh, some question, they did it under the cover of night because it was done so quickly. But, uh, want to give, uh, some appreciation and thanks to Joey Hopkins for following through with that. He told us some time ago it would be in April of this year, and I don't know if he got it done before May first, but it is done in much more, uh, pleasant and appropriate ride. Um, have a, there's a property on Garner Road, four oh-four West Garner Road that needs to be mowed. It's the same property that we had some, it was used for a car lot for a while, so now it's not a car lot, but it hasn't been mowed and cleaned, and we have this issue every year. So that needs some attention. And, uh, and just one more item, we got our council, our paper, uh, copy of the council agenda. I got mine yesterday, Sunday, and then we got the information about the, the, uh, financial report today. And that's, that's just, um, I need those things earlier to be able to go through them and get familiar with them. Um, I have other responsibilities, and I can't, I can't be expected to, uh, give it the full attention I need when we get it at the last minute. And so I'm not understanding why we're getting those, these, uh, this information so late.
Yeah, my understanding was the council agenda went out last week, so I'll, I'll have to find out a little more about that.
It showed up on my doorstep yesterday morning, Sunday. I, I went out that door, I went someplace, and I came back, and it was there.
And not to make excuses, some of these things just developed at the last minute. So we'll have to, uh, I'll have to make a decision whether just the, on them to another meeting. Um, knowing that we had limited meetings, I wanted to go ahead and get some of this in front of you, but we'll certainly take that in consideration.
Right, I, I can appreciate that, Rodney, but I also feel like we need to give, uh, these considerations our, our best and not our last-minute ideas.
Yes.
Okay, uh, that it, council? I believe that covered everybody. Um, so, uh, I will just second, uh, one thing that, uh, Mr. Dellinger said. I do commend, uh, the town its citizens, uh, so far, I think they have made a valiant effort to comply with, uh, CDC, uh, regulations and certainly state of emergencies. And, uh, so far, our, our numbers, uh, here for the COVID-nineteen have, uh, have been minimal. And I'm sure we all have a strong interest in, in that continuing. Um, and so, uh, so, uh, I, I commend all who were, who were, uh, complying with that. Um, at this point, uh, we are now ready to, uh, go into a closed session. And I perhaps should have mentioned this earlier, but actually, there is an item that, uh, I want to add and make it number one. This would be, uh, an item for the council to consider. Uh, legal, uh, representation slash litigation. And I believe, uh, Mr. Bag, you can correct me, but I believe the citation for that is one-four-three dash three-one-eight, uh, eleven A three. Um, so I would, uh, like for us to, to have that as the first item. And then the second closed session item would be, as you see it in your agenda there, with section, uh, the general statute, uh, site is, uh, one-four-three, three-one-eight, eleven A six. So, um, I would entertain a motion from council that at this point in time, we, uh, go into closed session to consider these two items.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you for this. Okay, any question, discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No? All right, um, council, I'm gonna suggest that we take about a, uh, five-minute, uh, is five minutes enough? Five-minute reset? Okay, um, the council went into closed session and has completed the session now. We discussed, uh, legal matters that will, uh, result in some action in the fairly near future as it relates to, uh, uh, town, uh, events. And so, uh, we also, uh, discussed, uh, in closed session, a personnel matter. And so those were the two items that were taken care of. I now will entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No? Okay. Thank you all. It's been a long meeting. It's late at night, and so appreciate all of your, uh, your participation, and feel free to sign off now.